Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please take your seats. All right, again, we are here at the October 4 Village of Woodbury Planning Board Meeting. We're going to take care of some administrative business first. Our secretary has been very diligently getting us all caught up on minutes. So I am going to offer a motion to accept the minutes, give me a few minutes, a minute here, of January 18th, February 15th, April 5th, April 19th, May 3rd, June 21st, September 6th, and September 20th as distributed. Second by Tommy. Any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
I got them all, right, Claudia?
Yeah.
Awesome.
We're all caught up now.
All right, first item on the agenda, Woodview Heights, review and discuss revised site plan submitted for proposed 13 lot subdivision. Said property is located on Hill Avenue in Highland Mills and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map's Section 204, Block 1, Lot 34 dot 2. Good evening.
Good evening. James Martinez and Laura Pruski here with Engineering and Surveying Properties. This submission, I know this project was before the board, a couple of times it was granted preliminary approval. We're back here kind of expanded a little bit on the grading of the subdivision, road profiles, utility profiles, and here to get more of, I guess, say, general consensus or general acceptance of the layout of everything. I know we still have full SWIP to go through, a stormwater design, sewer design, pump station calculations, all the technical good stuff, and that's going to come at a later date. But this was kind of to get back in front of the board, get the process going again.
Sounds good. Do you want to give us a quick overview? I don't think, Rich, you're probably the only one that was on the board when this was last in front of us.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, this board has done the extension, but we actually haven't seen this out of the plan, so. If you want to just give us the thousand-foot, 500-foot view, just to bring the board up to speed, that'd be great.
If these were the original plans, I think it was kind of...
Yes, so originally, they had proposed this as a subdivision, I believe, beginning in 1989. They had preliminary approval in 1994, and then a series of extensions until 2018, when they came back to the board and they referred to the ZBA for lot size variances, which led to, I think they were denied, there was some legal action, and they were granted the variances, and now we're back through the preliminary approval with 13 lots instead of 15 as it was originally approved. And we have updated the last preliminarily approved plan by AFR to the 13 lots shown here, and that's what he was discussing before. We tweaked the road profiles a little bit to make it work better. We changed some of the utilities to work better with the site, and we're here basically to just go over the layout with word and make sure before we proceed with the full design that it's acceptable to you.
Okay. Very good. Does the board have questions for the applicant before we go to our consultants?
Just real quick, entrance and exits, what are you going to do, one into Fillmore Court?
Fillmore.
And then one up on Hill?
Yes, because it's a through road.
Now, Hill's a, is it, oh, Jefferson, yeah.
Jefferson.
Isn't Hill a private road?
Hill is a private road.
Is that owned by the developer?
I don't know.
Who owns Hill, do you know?
I'm not sure.
Are you guys going to be able to use that, being that it's a private road?
I believe so. We'd need to see the easements that allow access over it.
Okay. Any other questions from the board right now? Nope. We're going to actually start with Kelly, because I know there are some little gotchas around this one based on the court-ordered ZBA decision and such.
There's, there's a few gotchas, but I wouldn't call them gotchas.
Restrictions.
Restrictions. I won't go through all of the ZBA issues. I think right now, the biggest issue is, I know the applicant has said a couple of times just now that they're, they just want you to see if you can accept this layout or approve this layout, and in my head, I'm going beep, 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 because I'm obviously not going to let you vote on that, and I know that James knows that. I'm not going to let you vote on it, it's not there yet. But you do have to start CECLR on this again, because that was actually something that timed out, was rescinded, et cetera. Circumstances changed, which is how we ended up in this situation in the first place. And right now, an EAF hasn't been submitted, so I know they still have to submit stormwater and stuff like that, but it's really got to start with a full EAF. So it's kind of my biggest sticking point at this part, because I want you to be able to get over the initial hurdle, but in order to do that, I can't do anything until that.
Right, we're going to have to do the environmental review before we really get into, and they're going to be subject to the moratorium, correct? Because CECLR has expired.
That's correct. So if they make it that far, they're going to have to...
Go to the village board.
Go to the village board.
Okay. Questions from Kelly?
And if they're submitting that, sorry, just one last thing. This also, I know it's been said a few times, and I think Natalie brought it up in her memo too, it requires a freshwater wetlands permit, so when you do get that full EAF, it would be great if they submitted that application at the same time, because that also requires a public hearing, and if you can hold them jointly at the same time, whenever you do that, which is obviously, it's not ready for that, I just want to put it on their radar, that would be best, so that you can really consider all of these issues all at once, and that they're also all studied under CECLR.
Makes sense, and we're not ready to type it yet, right?
No.
Yeah, I think so.
I think what really needs to happen, I think really for tonight, is they're looking to see, do you think this layout might work? Obviously, they need to provide that they have access over those private roads to get there, and I'm sure that they do, but it just needs to be demonstrated. They've got engineering issues that need to be worked out, but really, they need to submit some of those initial documents to, I want to say...
Really start moving the ball.
Really start moving the ball forward, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. Natalie?
Okay, so just to kind of, I think, actually, I didn't catch your name, I'm sorry.
Laura Pruski.
Laura, okay. Laura gave a nice overview of the history of the application, and, you know, when it was initially approved and considered, and then there was the ZBA court order, et cetera. The applicant was last before you in December of 2021. They have new engineering representation, so the plan has been changed, you know, as far as the size of the lots and slightly as far as the grading, considering the road and the homes proposed. One of the things that we wanted to kind of raise in our memo and have the board discuss with the applicant is that there were a couple of things that had been decided, you know, with the prior representation for the applicant, as far as whether or not an HOA was going to be established for the subdivision. If at that time, or prior representation indicated that an HOA would not be established, so that essentially, you would need, or what would be practical, is that the applicant would dedicate the road and the utilities to the village, so that you can ensure proper maintenance, you know, and access and all these things to those facilities. The second is ARB and Ridge Preservation were initially going to be deferred and put on basically the responsibility of individual lot owners, so as long as that's still the case, you know, we'll just kind of memorialize that for the board and moving forward, we won't comment on that herein. And I think actually, at the last appearance, you had asked that the applicant note that on the plan, so that it's memorialized on the plans and then interaction type of thing. So those two things should be confirmed. The other thing that I think is important to bring up at this time is the ZBA variance that was court-remanded had to do with the lot area for the six inner lots. This revised plan actually results in even smaller lot areas than what was approved by the ZBA, so it would basically indicate that additional relief would be required, you know, so I think that the applicant should really consider the sizes of the lots, discuss why they've changed with you, and really try to get back to what the ZBA approved otherwise.
Yeah, do you have a copy of the ZBA decision? If not, I can, I have, I have his email address. I don't have, okay, so I can send it to you, because I think, yeah.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
I thought that there was a reason, which is why I didn't go into the specifics, that, yeah, you were going to be asking for relief, but if you don't have it, then that would be a good place to start, to see what you're limited to, because it did go to court, get remanded, and things changed, so I'll send this to you right now.
Thanks.
So kind of when you're considering the overall layout, you know, this has happened before, where approvals have lapsed previously, and then you've, they've come back before you, and the general layout is the same, right? The road is generally structured the same, the lots were kind of decided when the ZBA had to make that decision, so, you know, the applicant should comply with that as closely as possible, and then you can consider it as you need to. The other thing that I thought was important and that the engineer raised was that the utilities have been relocated and easements have been shifted, so the plans that you reviewed previously, the easements followed the rear lot lines of the inner lots, basically, so they would impact essentially all six parcels instead of the three that are shown now. So the applicant has revised the plan to basically construct a direct stormwater and sanitary sewer discharge to like the lower graded area of the subdivision. There are some benefits and drawbacks to that, so I kind of listed them in our memo, and I think it's something that the board can talk to the applicant about either now or later, however you choose. But, so, the benefits that we think are the ease of installation and maintenance, also the way that the plans have been revised, it separates the utilities further from the wetland areas. The drawbacks would include the impact on the eventual property owners, so certain lots now are going to be completely bisected by the easements that are proposed versus having them at the wayway back of the lot type of thing, so there will be restrictions essentially, like if somebody wanted to put in a pool, they wouldn't be able to over the utilities type of thing. The other thing that's important for the applicant to be aware of is that the location of the utility easements impacts the net lot area calculations, and again, that goes back to the ZBA decision, so that's something that they'll want to look at closely. We have a lot of comments on the details, I won't go into them right now. We have consulted with the Highway Department on this application for prior reviews, so those comments should be incorporated in the plan as best as possible. A SWIP is required at the appropriate time. And then the only other thing that I really wanted to talk to you guys, oh, there's a couple of things, that I really wanted to talk to you guys about was how the applicant should prepare their SWIP and eventual impervious coverage. So in the past, the board has considered an ARB approval and basically agreed to the maximum building footprint of a home. Those calculations or the impervious area associated with those homes were carried forth to the SWIP, and then the stormwater management facilities were developed based on what was projected at that time, and I think that the village has seen, you know, the size of homes eventually increase, you know, with additions or going through ARB approvals or through the building permit process, so I'd like to kind of come up with a way, or come up, yeah, with a way with the board and the applicant on the best way to kind of make sure that the eventual development will, the stormwater management facilities will be able to function properly. So our memo suggests two different ways, and I think that the applicant should kind of review them and then kind of come back with a plan with, for the board to consider. But the first way is, right now, the lots are proposed around 6% coverage. If that's how they want to prepare the SWIP and agree to limiting it to that, where the code right now would allow up to like 20% for each lot essentially, then the board would want to think about memorializing that in their action, like, so that upon ARB review or the building permit process, the applicant is limited to 6% for each lot type of thing. Or the applicant, and that's like more of a legal thing too, maybe, like if there's a deed restriction that could be implemented on each lot, just to kind of make sure that, you know, once somebody goes in and starts putting sidewalks in or things that might not even go to the Building Department, you know, that they comply, you know? The other option is that the applicant could, or design their stormwater management facilities to 20% for each lot, which may be really conservative, you know what I mean, but it would also just ensure that in the future, the stormwater management facilities would always comply. So again, I think that the applicant can kind of consider those options and come back to the board with that. All right, I feel like I'm talking too much. Let's see. Oh, the only other thing I really wanted to bring up was about, site distances will eventually be provided on the plan, and I think that, you know, it would be good to have Phil weigh in on the, the plan when those, when that, when those details come in. All right, so that's it, unless you have anything else or any questions.
I talked more than normal, so.
I think as far as the easements go, I think I will agree that they should either run across the front or the rear of the properties and not anywhere in the middle. I don't think that's fair to the homeowners in the future, that there's a sewer easement running right through the middle of their backyard, and now they can't do anything because there's sewers, there's an electric, there's water there, and I think what we've done in past practice, this board with easements, is we've had them run with the street.
Yeah, they usually run with the street, or maybe like on an angle along the rear property line, if that's how it works out where the utilities are, but the easements that are drafted are restricted so that they can't be covered over, so like somebody who wants to put up a fence, they can't put up a fence in there. If they do, they could damage the pipe, so.
So I, I don't know the rest of the board, but I think the easement should be redone so that it's either the front or the rear, it doesn't really make a difference, but we don't want to run it down the middle or cross some of each driveway or something like that, I think that's not fair to future homeowners.
See, it'd probably devalue the lot too, if that was the case.
Yeah, you got a one acre lot, but you can't do anything in the back of it, because O and R has an easement through the middle of it. We have, at least since I've been on the board, we have never done a subdivision that doesn't include an ARB with it. Typically, when we, the subdivisions that I've been involved in, they've all come and they've had example homes, this is the four, five, six, whatever, homes they're going to build, and that, I think, eases or makes the board's job a little bit easier, because they know what the subdivision is going to look like in the end. We also, I think it gives this board better way to study the potential impacts of the subdivision. I don't know if I'm comfortable saying, well, we're going to just design for, what is it? I think it's 20% for total lot coverage, and then you're going to come in, you're going to have 15 different applications and 15 different reviews, and I, defeats the purpose of a subdivision, really.
That was going to be one of my questions.
Well, it's certainly something that, I mean, it's at, it's at the applicant's option, right? It's also at the applicant's risk.
Yeah.
And if they choose to go forward and they choose not to do ARB at this time, they're going to have to come back to you. So at the time that the person wants to design the house, which I think is why a lot of the subdivisions have said, here's four models, what do you think of these four models? You know? But again, that's, that is at their risk, although if you're reviewing this as subdivision and site plan, because you are looking at site plan elements, part of your code in 31045, I think I just looked at this.
We just talked about this.
I know. E1A31, something like that. You can write that down, it might be right.
I think it was actually I is the, I think it was I.
Okay, oh, yeah, no, you're right, you're right. I, I, 1A31, whatever.
They have to submit.
Exterior Architecturals is something that this board can require, not as ARB, if it's not going through ARB specifically, but for site plan, so that it really kind of behooves the applicant to do it at the same time. Again, they don't have to, it's up to them, but they would have to provide you with the exterior architecturals that your code requires.
Yeah, and they, you have to be pretty clear on where the final layouts of the houses are going to be, and they're going to kind of lock themselves into a size at this.
They, I, yeah, they can put a box on a, on a plan, and then if they don't want to build that whole box...
Smaller box, right.
It's a smaller box, but it would lock them into that box. Sometimes, and Natalie could probably weigh in a little bit more on this, there are notes on plans that say, here's the box, you can move it up to 10 feet in either direction or rotate at 10 feet, and that's it, but you're still locked into the box. So in that regard, it's up to the village and you guys, what you guys want to do on that.
Yeah, the main old setback, the coverage, and, you know, if we set limits of disturbance
or clearing or easements, and that would also have to be maintained, it just makes it really, just makes the process more difficult on everybody, and then it also adds in a layer of, really, the first house in is going to set, is going to set the tone for the, for the neighborhood.
Yeah.
So you get, the first person comes in and they build a, a modern colonial, and if someone wants to build a Cape Cod levee next to it, you're going to have two very dissimilar houses, and there's a chance that this board or whatever board you're in front of may tell you no, because you're strikingly dissimilar to each other as well. So there is a fair deal of risk associated with that, and that's just for you to talk to your applicant about, or your client about, and see what they, really, how they really want to proceed. And I'm going to presume that there are sidewalks based on the, the drawing all around the curb?
Correct.
Okay, I thought that's what that was, I just wasn't, I just thought that, I just wasn't sure there.
Site plan, move on the trees to...
Yeah, at, at some point, right, we're going to see limits of disturbance and that, and, and that's what we're getting at, is you're, you're, you're not totally locking yourself in, but you're, you're getting yourself kind of in a little bit of a corner, where when you want to make changes, or someone comes in front of this board and wants to make changes to a lot, it could be potentially much more difficult for them, because of how the site was reviewed and approved, and there could be, we're going through another applicant, re-filing a subdivision map, because there's notes that have to be removed and things along that line, so I would have a long conversation with your client, you know, again, it's their prerogative, but...
It's their prerogative, but if they're looking really for a, a good project, a streamlined review by this board, you might want to take a look at some of those things.
I mean, just, just to give you, you know, a little timeline, right now, we're about three months on ARBs from start to finish. By the time they come in, by the time they get reviewed, by the time they get on agenda, so if you do that for 15 lots and they all come at a different time, your, your client could be waiting quite some time. So friendly advice, you can take that as you wish.
Still no Hallboards Association, correct?
That I'm not sure on.
No, yeah, no Hallboards.
Okay, because then the streets will all have to be built to village standards, in order for them to be dedicated, so. Again, just something else to, for you guys to make sure you do, or else the village doesn't have to take dedication, if they're not built to their...
Is there any intention at all that these be dedicated to the village?
Well, if there's no HOA, right, what would you do?
Easements to the center of the road and a common, it could be very difficult.
Yeah, I mean...
But I just want to make sure that they're thinking, who's going to take care of it?
Well, that's what I'm saying, if you don't have an HOA, who at the end of the, you got to, you got 15 homeowners that have to agree.
Yeah, but it's, an HOA with only 15 homes is really difficult to actually operate, because I'm sure some of us, I'm, Rich, you, you're in a much bigger HOA, but smaller HOAs are very difficult. I just want to make sure it's going to be properly maintained for the future by whomever they're thinking is going to take care of it.
So again, another talking point with your client, if you must, if you will. What else? Anything else?
When you're talking about maintenance, if you count down slowly, village powers across all the regular rules, like...
Well, that's one of the things they're going to have to, they're going to have to, we're going to, Kelly's going to have to look at the deeds.
And it could be one of those things where, you know, Rob drives out, lifts up his plow, has permission to go over it, and then comes here and puts down his plow, but it, it really depends on how it works out.
Or if someone decides to put a chain across that private road, there could be...
That is a very dangerous situation legally and physically, so I do not recommend.
I'll go take mine down when I get home.
Anything else from the board for now? You're done.
Yeah, on the south end, where the weapons is, yeah, the, after all this rain, there is a creek, rushing water, the feet and the salt, so I, when you give your client on the water quality overlay, I'd like to see how that's going to be designed and what's going to happen to someone, was that it's part of the HOA, part below you? I mean, if you, have you been to the side of that?
I have not yet.
Okay, if you go to that side, you'll see there's a roaring river coming right from there into Saltman, yeah, it's very obvious.
So the parlay on Rich's comment would be two, as far as easement sanitar, we're going to want to make sure that you stay out of as far as the wetlands as much as possible, as far as, we don't want to have a ruptured sewer main or something, that, because all these eventually feed into Woodbury Creek, which recharged the aquifers here, so, yeah. But Rich is right, that is a very wet, it is a very wet side.
You got to lake this up about a foot.
So if you go for a siphon, it brings you galoshes.
And we saw it happen in New York City.
Yeah.
And they're supposed to, it was designed 100 years ago.
All right, anything else? So I'll use my proverbial saying, you got a little bit of homework, a lot bit of homework. So we'll look forward to your next submission, and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Have a good night.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, everybody's done? All right, everybody?
He didn't bring a balloon.
He didn't bring a balloon. Okay, Shlomo, Shlomo 50, Smith-Clove Road, review and discuss revised documents submitted for proposed site plan, special permit, ARB and water quality protection overlay, change of use from laundromat to apartment, said property is located in 50 Smith-Clove Road in Central Valley and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Section 231, Block 3, Lot 3. Good evening.
Hello, everyone. David Nimakow with a design firm representing this project for the last few months. So per our last meeting, I believe we're near approval. I received Natalie's comments, pretty consistent with what we spoke about, with the conditions that we're requesting during, for the draft final resolution, and I'm here to answer any, any questions that you have further on this project.
So you may have questions for the applicant right now?
Yeah.
Are you after, you're good?
You first again?
Yeah.
All right.
We're just, we're just switching it up.
We're just switching it up tonight. So I had a couple of things on this application.
No.
Sorry.
A couple of things.
If you had bought a balloon, it would have only been one thing.
Oh.
I had a balloon, so now it's a couple of things.
Okay.
I think mine are somewhat easy to address, and some of them are just updates that I want to address with the board. The first is that the applicant has taken this, and they've, if you remember, they were going to convert the laundromat into two apartments, now they're only converting it to one, but they only provided a floor plan for one floor, so they do need to say what's going to happen with the second floor, or how it's going to be used, or if they meant to say, oh, it's going to be a two-floor apartment, I don't know, so that needs to be clarified. There was another question about, and I think we talked about this last time, but I can't remember, how the, it shows the property line to the center line of the road, but don't worry, that's still not their property at this point. By operation of law, that now belongs to the county. If the board recalls, there was a variance, there were two variances that were granted by the ZBA for the minimum lot area and the off-street parking. It denied the variance for the reduced driveway width, but that no longer comes into play here, and it allowed that front parking spot in the front setback, which was actually something in H2M's memo too that I wanted to address. So there's another provision of the code that wasn't specifically referenced by the ZBA decision that requires, correct me if I say this wrong, but the driveway to be 10, the first spot to be 10 feet off the road, something, something like that.
Right, the street line setback.
Street line setback. So although it wasn't specifically referenced by the ZBA in the ZBA's decision, it was clear that the ZBA's decision meant to vary, and I don't want to use the word supersede, so vary those provisions to allow the parking stall in this location, so in that, in that regard, the plan complies.
So they're allowing the parking in the front.
And they're allowed to have that, that one parking space where it is. It was based on a plan that the ZBA reviewed. The Orange County DPW had submitted a letter, and they requested additional information. I don't know if that had been submitted or not, so that's just something I wanted to follow up on. I think we had requested, or actually Natalie requested on my behalf, a copy of the sewer easement, so I would need that. And that's all I have. Thanks.
That's not too bad.
It's so fun, I get to say things first.
You do.
I mean, I don't want to go first all the time, this is just like a one-night thing.
It's whoever, I just throw a dart, whoever's name it lands on.
It sounds dangerous.
Natalie?
Okay.
Oh, we did, oh.
Go ahead.
Okay, so in our cover letter, point seven, we did respond to Orange County DPW's comments.
Okay.
So we noted that as paragraph seven. Have, we have not received...
Did you get anything back from them?
Not yet.
Okay.
I think it was just submitted really recently, right, so it may take a little, yeah.
Okay.
Either way, forward that as soon as you get it, I think.
What's that?
Forward it as soon as you get it, the response from the county, yeah.
We must have done it before the submission date, so at least two weeks ago.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I missed that, my apologies.
No, it's no worries.
I'm just gonna try to be brief, because I think, you know, David and Kelly have kinda summarized how the plan has changed since its last submission. Only one apartment is proposed instead of two, which actually kinda makes it two single-family dwellings on one lot, that's permitted by the code, so there's no issue. Because of the reduction, the lot area requirements are reduced, so although the ZBA authorized a variance, the need for variance is less, so we assume that there's no further variance required. One of the things we did wanna talk about is the coverage, to construct the parking stalls, they will be eliminating the small landscaped area on the side of the building, and proposing that as gravel. The code defines coverage, including parking areas, no matter how they're surfaced. So in order to avoid the need for variance, the applicant should consider creating another pervious area on site. So perhaps they would construct, you know, a landscaped bed at the rear of the buildings to offset the change in coverage.
Which, which paragraph was that?
Sure.
Which point?
I think I missed that in reviewing the comment letter.
It's the second page, B2, coverage. So again, the idea is that they can, you know, because they're increasing the coverage, they could reduce it in another area, so that there's a no-net change. I'm gonna talk a little bit too about the water quality protection overlay, which impacts this lot. Most of the lot is impacted by the riparian buffer, which as you know, there should be no disturbance, you know, with, there's certain exceptions. But in this case, if the planning board would be amenable to it, there are certain findings that the board can make, you know, that the impact would be no greater than similar adjacent uses. I listed them in my code, there's no practical, or my code, my memo, there's no practical alternative. The land disturbance is necessary, the disturbance is minimized closest to the affected water body. It's compatible with adjacent uses, and impacts to the water body are benign. So that's something that after the public hearing, the board would have to make that finding, if you were to agree to allow the offset, essentially. The parking arrangement, again, is only four stalls, where six were previously proposed. We think that, I think Phil and Colliers had provided a memo on this application previously, so it'd be good to have them weigh in. Again, our only comment at this time is that the board may wanna consider with the applicant, whether or not a guardrail should be installed along the bank, you know, where the, where the cars would be backing up, essentially. Again, and that kinda has impacts under the water quality protection overlay, but it seems to me that if, if the board found it compelling, and the need warranted, then, you know, that's when you can kinda make that finding to allow the disturbance to occur. The plan indicates the existing dumpster is going to be removed in lieu of just traditional refuse collection facilities. You know, our memo notes that the applicant could show where those would be located on the plan for you to consider. The other thing I wanted to raise was with respect to ARB. I think the only change to the exterior of the building right now is a replacement of the existing window. And the applicant notes that that's to comply with the building code requirements. The code does exempt ARB review for things that are de minimis in nature, but it should be more of like an in-kind replacement type of thing. So we've asked the applicant to kinda confirm whether or not the aesthetic of the window is gonna match the previous, you know, so that you can confirm you don't need to review that any longer.
Does that mean he has to put the laundry sign back in it too?
Is it part of the existing window, like built in?
It's not, it's been there since the building.
Oh, okay. No, I think he can get rid of that, it's up to you guys, though. And then, yeah, I also raised the issue with the county's response, and also wanted to kinda close the loop. In the last meeting, you authorized a referral to the ESOS, that was done after the last meeting, and no comments have been received. That's all I have.
Comments, questions for Natalie?
What about the upstairs?
I have no idea. I, I, you know, I, I mean, can't see the forest through the trees. We were so intent on the first floor, removing the laundry use, and converting it to residential, or one apart, well, two apartments in it one, gave no consideration to what was going on on the second floor.
Guess you'll have to ask her.
Huh?
Guess you'll have to ask her.
Yeah, 'cause we don't want it to mysteriously turn into a second apartment.
It's a pre-existent, whatever, whatever's happening there right now is pre-existing, that's for sure.
La, 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 la. You know what, Natalie and Kelly, I actually have a question with the buffer and the riparian zone.
Sure.
The disturbance is already dug there.
It is a previously disturbed area.
Yeah, so, I mean, is there any wiggle room in that finding for the board? It's not like there'll be, redisturbing area that's already been disturbed, unless they have to.
Put a guardrail in. A guardrail and more pervious, they're using the parking stall, right?
Right, they would have to put like, impervious.
Impervious.
They had to put more impervious.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is gravel right now.
It's technically considered impervious under the code, just the way the definition for coverage is laid out.
How big of an area are we talking with that?
It's, it would be small.